President.
Member Magnolia?
Present.
Okay. On the agenda is a request to add a new position, Chief of Staff. Dr. Alvarez, if you could.
Yes, thank you. So, this Chief of Staff position came about for a number of reasons, which I'd like to outline before just running through the job description. And so, in a Chief of Staff position in a large urban district, that administrator serves as a key partner in strategic planning, stakeholder engagement, and day-to-day operations. This Chief of Staff would provide a bridge between myself and various stakeholders, ensuring that the vision of our district is communicated effectively and implemented. So, not just discussed, but also implemented, and I'll give you a few examples of what I am alluding to. That Chief of Staff would also play a vital role in managing some key priorities and making sure that we're focused on educational initiatives, streamlining operations, strengthening communication, and making sure that we navigate complex landscapes and issues with greater effectiveness. So, really, to summarize sort of the job description, which will take you back in a second, and the number of employees and staff that we are serving, we're looking at strategic planning and support, which means really assisting in developing and implementing the district strategic initiatives. As you know, we're in the last year of the last district strategic plan. We're currently about to start meeting, starting in the new year, regarding how are we going to develop that strategic plan for the next five years, and engaging and looking at some of the data collected and some of the data that was not collected, and what actually happened with those initiatives in the strategic plan. We clearly need a lot of support in the implementation of those initiatives to make sure that they are actually all met, in terms of goals and metrics, very clearly. And we don't currently, as we go through this year, and look at those outcomes of this last five-year plan, and what we do have available to review and share, not only with the school committee, but also with our community about the strengths and opportunities for growth, we'll see later in the spring where it is that we still have a lot of work to do regarding making sure that we are actually following through on all of the initiatives that we plan out in the district strategic plan. Stakeholder engagement falls in line, very much so with that, in terms of making sure that we have community involvement, not just at the school site levels, but also as a district engagement level. Operational efficiency is one of the biggest ones in terms of key points regarding how we look at our systems and structures, or those things that we lack in systems and structures, and you can take that from anything, from instruction, business, I mean, there's just every area that we'll talk about in the organizational chart, which we hope to release at the end of the week after our next school committee meeting on Thursday. We really need to review, not just policy, but what administrative procedures do we have supporting the policies, and which ones do we lack, so that we can start developing those. And that is going to increase our operational efficiency across the district. Being a communication liaison is extremely important in terms of how we communicate, not only with our parents and partners in the community, but also our, how we operate as a school district, in terms of making sure that all of our schools are receiving and have questions answered. We are extremely large when it comes to making sure that we're trying to have a centralized process, so that those processes are fair and equitable for all students. And then the last thing is really focusing on leadership support, so that our teachers are supported at our school sites in every aspect. And so, I want to just bring attention to the fact that we are currently serving close to 17,000 students with 3,170 employees across the district, and Deb will show us, Deputy Rogero will show us, I think you're gonna have to hit the plus 50, because it's so small. So, this is an actual organizational chart and tool that we've used to develop all of the direct reports, as well as who is directly sitting under them. If you go back to org chart on the top left, or it'll pop right back up.
So, this is Dr. Alvarez here, with Terry Hellman as confidential, and under Dr. Alvarez, it has the three deputies, myself, Marcella, Boris, and Kevin Powers, with all the employees that fall under the three of them.
Deb, can you go back? Like, I'm trying to see this and...
Yeah, so currently...
Right here, this is Deputy Powers.
Okay.
And then, so if I close, I close this.
So, who's under Deputy Powers? I can't read that.
Yep. So, she has curriculum instruction, attendance, department, elementary catered by, social emotional learning, leadership development, MLE, community schools, and then 10 elementary principals.
Okay.
When you look at mine, or Marcella, as we must, Deputy Boris, she has attendance six to 12, secondary schools, alternative education, athletics, transportation, wealth and center. And then, myself, I have nine elementary schools, human resources, compliance, and then I also do facilities. And then, if I go the other way, this is Kevin Q, and all his departments, he has accounts payable, food services, payroll, facilities, property, inventory, ISD finances, so we kind of work together on that, technology, grants management, and procurement specialist. And then it goes into the data assessment and accountability team, which is data center, data assessment and accountability, that's one big team. And then, executive director of innovations, grants management, early college, and school guidance counselors, and district support fall under that, as well as the assistant director of extended learning. School safety and security, that's Joan Mackin. Diversity, equity, and inclusion, that's Bobby Bishop, and then under Bobby is like the affinity groups, the inclusivity panels, student government advisory, and then the mass department of ready training that we're going through. He oversees that. And then, special education, which right now is Dr. Kalama, and under her, she has the deputy, basically the whole special education department. So, it's all the assistant directors and the deputy. And then, within these smaller departments, there are additional people. So, like, under finance, accounts payable, there's how many people in that?
Accounts payable's six.
Yep. So, each department, each smaller department also has people that oversee. Of course, Dr. Alvarez, oh my god, I'm sorry. This is very confidential. And obviously, what I was gonna say is, obviously, at the top is Dr. Alvarez, who oversees all of it.
I do wanna share before we go through any questions on the job description and review the position summary. In doing a breakdown of what has happened between opening of school and currently to date, the number of meetings and commitments on a daily, on a weekly and daily basis are about an average of, in addition to, this is in addition to any other school site visits, for example, observations, things that need to happen on a daily basis, the average is five to eight meetings a day. And on any given day, there's an overlap of one to four meetings in those meetings. And so, although Deputy Rogero is my designee, that still only covers sometimes half of the commitments and the required meetings that we need to physically be present at, and/or provide input, or bring back input to the district to be either in compliance or participating. And so, that is one of the biggest challenges of this position, in terms of having to be required to be in three or four places at the same time, in which a Chief of Staff and a person who can either communicate quickly with one of us to provide information, support decision-making, is absolutely needed. We are working in a very fast-paced environment, in terms of what happens in the workplace from the moment we get here, and so, there really just wouldn't even be enough hours in the day, even if we spread these meetings out. Most of them are required by, either it's DCE, or we have, you know, meetings with other stakeholders that we have commitments to. And so, again, to say five to eight meetings a day, with a number of those overlapping, becomes an extreme challenge without having another person to be able to help us navigate So, in the position summary, there were a number of considerations, these, this was created with the support of HR, looking at Chief of Staff positions, thank you Deputy Rogero, Chief of Staff positions for Boston Public Schools, for a number of other large urban districts where there are a number of either high needs, as well as what were the demands in terms of strategic planning, which again, is one of our key responsibilities as we move through a three- to five-year process in a plan. And so, in the summary and essential functions, overseeing administrator and administering all operations, in terms of making sure that there's a liaison between our departments. As you saw in that organizational chart, we have an extensive number of departments and teams under those departments that require ongoing and constant communication, and all look to the superintendent for direction and guidance. And so, without that type of support, right, there's a void of information, and what we want to eliminate is working in silos in our district, and limiting that void of information that in some, sometimes has existed between our own departments, because they don't communicate effectively, or something has not come from the superintendent's office, or given guidance and provided that direction, to make sure. So, that is felt, right, at the school site, and it's also felt in our classrooms, in terms of how teachers receive information, how our leaders receive information, and we want to eliminate that, so that we have, again, coherence and clarity across our schools. So, in terms of those essential functions, if we go to that second bullet, possibly attend and represent superintendent's office at specified events, meetings, community events, may speak to media outlets as necessary, that is something that occurs frequently, and sometimes have a very, for very sensitive information requests, which go far beyond what we do on social media. Serve as a liaison between local, state, and federal officials, as well as elected officials and our union presidents. Act as a confidential liaison to internal departments and the superintendent, and shall plan and supervise the administration of superintendent's office work with the executive leadership team in developing and implementing policies and procedures. And again, that is one of our, one of the things that we need to work on over the next months, is really not just one, one issue is the policy, right, which has been worked on, I know diligently, by the subcommittee and a number of committed stakeholders, but it's also, then what do you do to develop administrative policy, so that everyone is clear on what needs to happen next, and how does it happen, and how do then we support those activities and actions that need to take place. And so, in qualifications, looking at an advanced degree in education, public administration, business administration, or even a Juris Doctorate degree, we're seeking proven experience in educational leadership roles, focus on urban education and high-need student populations, strong understanding of equity issues in education, and a commitment to fostering an inclusive environment. Really, this person, this administrator, human being, would really be a key, right, pivotal to making sure that we continue to change our culture across the district, to be inclusive and to be effective communicators. In strategic thinking, I'm sorry, I skipped one, so, exceptional communication and interpersonal skills to build relationships with diverse stakeholders, and strategic thinking, problem-solving abilities to address complex challenges in the urban educational context, and a knowledge and understanding of administrative principles, practices, methods, techniques, and skill in dealing with the public is paramount. And so, there was a list of requirements that mirror some of the summary points that I shared in the beginning, when we opened, just elaborated through 10 points, and looking at the salary requirement, the base salary makes it competitive, yet not nearly as high as some of the other urban districts, and what they are paying their chiefs of staffs. So, that was a recommendation from HR to have it mirror an executive leadership position salary.
Yes.
Just out of curiosity, because you were referencing Boston, are there school districts that are the same size as ours, that have Chief of Staff positions? Because obviously, Boston is much larger than Lynn. So, if so, can you, can you name some of the districts that you specifically looked at that have this position?
I know Mr. Gala was not able to be here, but he does have a list. I can certainly get communication to him, and he had also researched some of those average salaries, and they were between 175 and 218. So, this is well under that, but I can get a list of some of those similar-sized districts.
Okay, thank you.
I know Cambridge has a Chief of Staff. That was one of the ones that we were discussing.
And Chair Kapole, if I can ask one more question?
Yes.
So, a lot of what you're talking about here is strategic planning, and I'm wondering about the wisdom of a permanent position, rather than hiring a consultant for the duration of the strategic planning cycle, especially a consultant who can work to ensure that we have processes in place, but does not become a permanent employee of the Lynn Public Schools. So, can you just talk a little bit about the wisdom of a permanent position, rather than a consultant, to specifically help with this area?
Absolutely. The rationale behind that is the district strategic plan isn't a short-term goal, it is a long-term goal. The planning, although it may be a three- to five-year document, in terms of what those goals or initiatives, it should be built upon. So, what we do for this next five years is building upon what we've done in the last five years, and so, the continuity of that is extremely important, and we would want someone to take that position that's also not only willing to stay in Lynn, but has been possibly even, you know, looking at, like, do you have historical context, and how do you, you know, how have you been a member of the community and seen our district go through changes, or no changes, right, and how do we support the changes that we wanna see in the future?
I have thoughts about that, but I'll keep them to myself. Thank you. Well, I, I'll just offer this, right? The success of a strategic plan is, is how folks engage with it, right? So, a titular head, whether they work for the school department, or they are a consultant, is only as strong as everyone who's gonna carry out the strategic plan. And so, while that might be a kind of key feature for somebody who's writing it, or who's, you know, kind of coaling all of this information, stakeholder engagement is the most important thing about the success of a strategic plan. So, to my mind, whether that person is a consultant or a permanent employee of the Lynn Public Schools matters way less than whether there's widespread buy-in to the strategic plan, because almost always, whenever you're shifting gears, which a lot of strategic plans ask for, if people aren't 100% behind that switching of gears, then it doesn't matter how facile the person at the helm is at understanding the direction of the district, you don't have stakeholder buy-in. So, I think, I appreciate your answer, but I think that it matters less who heads it than how folks are engaged in the process.
And so, remember that that's only one part of this job description?
Absolutely.
And the reason, and maybe in some school districts, right, they are not directly involved with the strategic plan, but seeing the lack of information that we have from our last five years, it also is part of the communication process, right, in engaging those departments, to engage also with community and stakeholders, and school sites, and leaders. And so, it's sort of that person that also is looking at that overseeing, what is the communication of the departments with schools, and our teachers, and keeping everyone well-informed. Small example, even in an emergency, in a crisis management situation, I remember back in the spring, it was very difficult, you know, if, if I was shadowing Deb at that time in transition, and we showed up at a high school to support an emergency, we still had to be very timely, in terms of making sure that communication went to school committee. Sometimes, communication was missed with the Lynn Teachers Union, and it wasn't for lack of, we don't want to communicate, it's that we can't be in the middle of solving a problem, and at the same time overseeing the entire process, and making sure that everything, all the steps that need to be in place are in place. And part of our issue right now is that some of those steps aren't even written down. We virtually have very little in writing, in terms of administrative procedures internally, for our staff and schools to follow, so that we get things right.
Okay, thank you.
And please, Deputy Rogero...
This is why we're working on a staff handbook. There's a whole team that's working on that, a staff handbook, as well as a principal handbook, that will mirror each other, but then the principal handbook will have the administrative procedures that go with the information. And Dr. Alvarez is correct, every time Dr. Alvarez, in her transition, asked a question about, you know, a procedure or a policy, we would have the answer, but then she would ask, do we have that in writing? Nothing was ever put in writing. I can't speak to that, I wasn't the superintendent, I was interim for a year, but it opened my eyes to how much is not documented and written down.
Can I ask a follow-up question, Chair Kapole? We, we approved a communications director position, if I recall, a year and a half ago, does that sound right?
More than that, even.
Well, I mean, I've only been on it for two years, and I definitely approved.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so, it's, it's within my tenure. Okay. And so, I was, part of the rationale for that position was the communication thing that you just said, and figuring out if it was in the union or not in the union, it was that that person needed to be able to sort of be dynamic with, if there was an emergency or whatnot, so that that person was not kind of held to the normal nine-to-five. Is that position not functioning, doing what you just mentioned?
So, currently, the communications specialist, right?
Specialist, yeah.
Is the title, and Deb can elaborate on maybe perhaps the vision that where it was created, how it ended up sort of in the role that it is now.
The vision was Dr. Tullwiler's vision.
Yes.
And it was around the time that one of the confidential secretaries was retiring, and the feeling was that we needed consistent communications, or principals having access to letters that, you know, when they were dealing with a situation, that they would get assistance from this person, on letters to share information with families, things like that, as well as to unify the communication across the district, in terms of social media and getting information out.
Yeah.
Newsletters, website, that position has actually been working closely with the city for the past year, on the website changeover, and so, that work is still happening. We've, we're now on the new website, but there's backwork that has to happen, so that we can get everything updated. So, that position is working on communication, but not at the level of the vision that originally had been put out there.
It's definitely not an operations...
Yeah.
...communication, right, which I think is where the difference is, perhaps, in terms of, like, how you, what communication, and what, you know, what is delivered exactly. And we're talking about operational efficiency versus social media communication, and website communication, and communication regarding what our school sites are doing, or even parent letters, ensuring that there are translations, which all of that is occurring, and so, but that's, that, with our 27 schools, that's a, that's a whole function and role in and of itself.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
So, Dr. Alvarez, we got quite a few messages today from concern from teachers and staff and community. One was the, the amount of money this person would make. The other was, you know, like, let's focus on teachers, getting them in the classroom, which I know, as a district, we are already doing. I know they're doing that, and they're working hard to fill them, but statewide, we are having a, a teacher shortage, to say the least. So, I know that. My question is, and their question to me, is like, in a analysis where Student Opportunity Act monies are gone, and where, like, at crunch time, which we were in 2014, we did not have a lot of money in this district, until we fought for that, you know, Student Opportunity Act, and the president of the union fought for that, and we sat in, I forget what you would call those, shaila, they were like, we went to rally, and we fought for those, that Student Opportunity Act and the change of the formulas. So... So, if we were to ever go back, say we get this Chief of Staff, there's a couple of things I want to mention about this. Like, if we already have duplication of the communications specialists could be part of that Chief of Staff job, could we cut that position of communications specialist if we needed to reduce?
It's something we could certainly look at.
If we have the Chief of Academics, we have that job posted.
Right.
So, when they are overseeing all these, and I'm throwing your chart in my head. When they're overseeing another department that has an executive director, we could actually cut that executive director if that other person is in charge of them.
That's correct.
So, in the interim, like, maybe this comes in this part of the year, but like going towards the end of the year, when we go to the budget, we can make the cuts that would like make this equal. And we would still have enough money to have the teachers that we are trying to find now to get into certified quality teachers to get into classrooms.
Yes, absolutely, my mistake.
In the next budget.
And the teacher budget is not impacted by this position or the executive leadership positions. And Mr. McHugh, can you share just sort of the structure and one of the reasons that we waited in realizing early on that this might be a position that we needed, right, to make sure that we had all of the, everything that we needed for budgeted through the school year '24, so?
Yeah, so, just to take a step back, last year, and I think when we put the budget together, we actually, I think, out of the new positions we put into the budget, 32% were teachers. So, 32% of the additional positions were teaching jobs and we're still trying to fill those on a daily basis. So, that's an important fact. So, we support our teachers in the classroom and we've been doing that consistently. So, that's what we're trying to, our ultimate goal. But with that said, there's a lot, there are positions still unfilled. If you go on the website, you'll see positions from paraprofessionals and there's still some administrative jobs that are unfilled. So, in discussions about funding this job, when I was asked about it, I said, "Why don't we wait to the halfway point of the year where the impact of this would be a lot less?" So, for example, if we were to post this job hypothetically in the next couple of weeks, you're really not going to get anybody on board till February. I mean, to go through the interview process and everything else. So, that's five months. So, the cost for this year's budget would be $65,350 for this position to fund it through the end of the year. Now, I know next year it would get the full amount, but that, we have next year's budget amount to move forward to fund this. And as we'll know, the budget numbers will be coming out. The SOA number is still supposed to be what it typically was, so I would anticipate would be, you know, at or around the number we got this past year, which was well over $20 million. I think it was closer to $26 million. So, that's the anticipation. Now, again, we can always say, none of us have a crystal ball to say what's going to happen a year or two years down the road, but the SOA still has another couple of years left of funding. So, as long as they state, does what they said they would do as part of that, and I remember, Donna, you went as well, we went to Malden and sat in those hearings and when there were presentations a number of years ago, to support this as well. And that was the outcome, to get this SOA money. And I still see it coming. You know, it's the best we can do at this point. So, you know, the impact on this year's budget is minimal with the savings of salaries that we still haven't quite filled. So, I'm not worried about this year at all. And even next year, as long as we get the SOA money, this should be able to stabilize our budget. So, I look at it from the funding store that we should be okay.
I do want to just comment on a recent change that was made that could have possibly discouraged teachers from applying here in Lynn after school had started. So, can you share a little bit more about what was agreed upon recently with L T U?
So, part of the agreement with L T U around the shift from bumping and bidding to applying and interviewing was a timeline that jobs that would be posted would be, that internal candidates could apply for. They had until August 15th, Sheila? No, September 15th, sorry. September 15th. And which we honored. And that after September 15th, from September 15th until the spring, when we start the new budget season of hiring, that they would be posted as long-term subs because we would want to repost them for internal candidates to be able to apply for if they're interested. But by labeling them as long-term subs, what we found was applicants were going to other districts because theirs were not labeled as long-term subs. And so, they saw ours as not permanent positions. And so, Sheila worked with us, we met with Sheila and we talked about the impact of that and came to an agreement that we would take off the long-term sub label so that applicants would see it as a permanent position. We have so many unfilled positions, they're going to be permanent. So, but these jobs will still need to be posted for internal people to be able to have an opportunity for those jobs, should they want them. But by taking that label off.
We're hoping we get.
We're hoping we get more.
Additional teaching applicants that want to come to Lynn because the neighboring districts and talking to superintendents in our neighboring districts, they were hiring subs and teachers every day because they didn't have, they didn't have temporary, so to speak, positions, right? So, they were picking up people that, you know, would be discouraged by, "Why do I want to apply to a district who will then tell me at the end of the year, I no longer have a position and I have to start looking all over again?" So, we're hoping that makes a significant impact on our teacher hiring. And in working also with HR, we're looking at a ramped-up recruiting effort for the spring.
I was just going to add to that, actually. There's an agreement with L T U on doing intents to hire. No, what do we call it? A letter of, what do we call it, Sheila?
I didn't think that was like, it was like, it was an intent.
Intent to hire, like that they're going to a job fair to recruit new students out of college and people who are looking for positions. And that the jobs won't be specific to any school or any specific position, but it would be elementary teacher, middle school math, high school physics, you know, that it will be specific in that way in terms of licensure. And that they'll do interviews right on the spot and if it's someone that we're interested in, they would get a letter that says that you are, our intent is to hire you. And that as we get closer to the end of the year where we can start placing people, then we would place them into a position. We did not do that in the past and I can say, if Dr. Kalala is listening, it was one of the things she talked about a lot because she went to the fair last year as a principal and interviewed many people, but because we couldn't give that letter, there was no feeling of confidence and commitment that we as a district were going to hire them and they, you know, we've all been there when you're trying to get a job, you want to know you have a job. And so, this letter with the agreement with the union is going to allow us to say, "You have a job, be confident in that, we'll get you through HR with all the paperwork, but your assignment will be determined later."
Okay, can I?
Yes.
All right, so, for many, many years, I've been on this school committee for eight years. And I have heard several times that administration, and I'm sure you heard it, Deb, and you, Mr. McHugh, they're in silos, they're all downtown in that building, they really don't get out. So, now with this reorganization, because I never knew until I saw Dr. Tuttwiler's organization, neither did anyone on the committee know how much was underneath you. So, there was a reason why you couldn't get out. And I understand that the new positions that have been added is allowing you to get out of that silo, which a lot of teachers have spoken to me about, like, the people are downtown, they're downtown, they're not getting out, they don't know what's going on, they don't know, you know, like, you're clueless. You go to see a new shiny thing and you're going to bring it in and throw it down their throats. And that's what's been happening for eight years. And actually, in 2013, when I retired, is what I said, "Enough is enough and I'm going to run for the school committee and I am going to make a difference when I get on the school committee." Because what has been happening to our teachers is not, has not been successful for them. They are excellent teachers, they work really hard, they have a brain in their head, they know good curriculum when they see it, they know when something's not working. That communication has to get out. So, we're, I guess the question is, this Chief of Staff, he would, she would eliminate the silos?
Correct. And not just eliminate silos, but also allow, so, one of the things that I am doing with the executive leadership team and the schedule and frequency of instructional visits and walkthroughs is moving all meetings to the afternoon so that I can be in schools every day in the mornings, at least minimally until noon. And the deputies have already shifted to that schedule, all three of them, visiting schools.
I was in three schools today.
And so, that's the goal, is to also have, when there is something that needs immediate attention, right, in those morning opportunities, to have a Chief of Staff be able to attend, communicate so that, because it is of the, it's critical, right, for all four of us to be in schools every day in the mornings.
So, talking about that, I have heard that when you do go to a school, that you don't communicate with teachers, they don't know what to expect, they're nervous, they don't know, you know, like, you're not, no offense, you're not Dr. Tuttwiler. Dr. Tuttwiler would walk into school and, "Hey, how are you?", you know? And it's difficult for teachers to read you. I read you like a book, but it's difficult for them. So, this position, let me paint the picture. Last year or the year before, there was a child at one of our high schools that had a toy gun and it went, like, it got blown out of proportion, not blown out of proportion, but the communication was not good. So, if we had a chief officer, Chief of Staff in that position, you, all the deputies would be in that school contacting this person to contact the newspaper or contact the, contact all the people that need to know what's going on, the unions, everyone that needs to know. That's what this position would do.
That's correct. And I do remember that incident. And so, you know, that was a learning experience, I think, for both of us too, in the specific situation and what we needed to change to make sure that communication was effective and timely, right? Because all of it is also part of being timely. And really, a lot of the walkthroughs in the early part of the year have been communicating with principals, not interrupting instruction, right? Observing some of what is taking place in classrooms and providing feedback to the district team for support. And so, that is going to shift to having a lot of feedback for principals, for principals to do, you know, their piece in terms of supporting teachers and classroom instruction so that we've really become a teaching and learning organization. And that has not necessarily, that's a shift from what we did in the first semester. So, there was really a reason to not be intrusive or sort of looking at things that were just operational or peripheral, right? Like, how do, that was part of the fact-finding and really assessing, what do we need as a district to be successful overall when we walk into schools to make sure that we set ourselves up to provide leaders and teachers the actual, whether it's PD, whether it's, you know, I mean, we have, we have needs that are, yes, operational and very basic, and then we have needs at the school sites where, you know, it's clear for us to see that we need to support teachers in a different way, that we can't continue to just do quick PD, that we need to support educators who are on emergency certifications because they understand and have knowledge of content but not pedagogy. So, there's a number of things that we know that we need to go way deeper in to, starting in January. And so, this would help us facilitate that type of deeper learning as an organization as well.
So, that's another thing that I wanted to address, but I didn't know when to address that. You had said in your interview that we would start our professional development in the spring so that teachers would be, get their PDPs and get developed throughout the spring going into the summer. And then, when they start in the fall of next year, they would be pretty solid on their professional development. Is that on time? Is that?
We are still looking at that timeline in offering opportunities for PD throughout the entire second semester, so not just from January, but through the summer, as well as putting ahead of the timeline that we're typically roll out resources. And Kevin can also speak to that, where things end up after July 1st in the hands of teachers and becomes very difficult just because of the timing and purchasing restrictions of how the budget has been created, where things for next year must be purchased from July 1 onwards. And so, they arrive August 22nd or so, you know, the last week of August and give teachers and the district very little opportunity. So, we're shifting that timeline and we're looking at, you know, how we can facilitate that so that teachers have those resources frankly months in advance so that we can get ahead of where we need to be for school year '25 as opposed to what we've traditionally done in the past.
And how does that look now financially, Kevin? Because I'm still looking at this position, I want to make sure.
Well, as we, again, you know, we still going to have some additional funding, we'll be probably coming back if we need to move anything. If there's any additional salary savings, I would be coming back in the spring to make a transfer to bring those funds back into the non-salary line so we can get that big jump on anything we can. And also, there's always some additional funds left over from other accounts. So, the goal would be to, it's kind of like when we did the computers, you know, how we pooled all the unfunded monies together and did the purchase to get the computer order in in May. So, it came before the start of school, so we had the computers at the start of school for children could get those when they arrived, so we didn't have to wait till October or something for them to come in. So, we're using that same concept to try to get school supplies and things that we need out to our staff early on. And it would be ideal to order stuff in May before July, because the new budget starts in July, when it starts in July, every school district is putting their orders in and everything gets backlog. So, we're trying to get ahead of that curve.
Can you also just share a little bit about how our, when you said we may have monies coming back, I think, like, the communication about our net school spending and what we, our intention is there?
Yes, we received, I think we shared with you that there was a letter that we are going to be approximately for this year budgeted, we're going to be like about $2.2 million short of net school spending. That was the projection we were seeing. Unfortunately, once we get the official commitment letter from the state, once they do the final review of everything, we have a commitment from the mayor and the CFO that they will come back to us with an additional allocation. And those are the funds we'll be starting to use as well to put those towards getting ahead of the curve on the supply line. So, we want to try to build the next year's budget with that same thought about getting things ahead. So, when I first started a number of years ago, we, like, for athletics, that's what I always did with athletics. We always bought the athletic stuff like the year in advance. So, they would be buying stuff in the spring and they already had the fall supplies from last year's budget. And then, we'd basically be buying winter and the spring and then the fall. So, they were like, so by the time you got the new budget open, you didn't have to worry about fall sports. Because when we started, you would never have socks or you would never have things, soccer balls for the fall. So, we tried to, I used that methodology to buy supplies. So, basically, we're going to take that and use that uniformly across all the districts so that they'll always have stuff in the beginning of the school district. Because it's better to come in, you know, early, late July, you know, and getting all the supplies in. and getting all the supplies in the schools, and it's just them sorting and getting ready so when teachers come in the room, they'll have all their needs at that point.
So, so as far as professional develop resource, resources and things that teachers need for the fall, we would be getting them, getting, having them trained, having them prepared, having the resources so the teachers could have a good understanding of it. In the spring going through the summer, so when they start in the fall, they feel prepared, they don't feel like they're inundated with all this stuff again. So we're sort of gonna make it, like, instead of the July cycle, July, it will be like March to March, whatever, it would be spring, spring.
Right, so once you start the process, it kind of rolls forward, so what you'd be doing is if we get the, your funds this year, and we buy all this stuff, you're basically pre-buying for next year. It doesn't necessarily have to be everything for next year, but anything that's essential for the opening of school is what you buy. And then you take the full allocation next year, and you use the expenditure for, like, let's say the winter and the spring, but you still should have funds left over to that pre-buy for the following year. So you're already gonna have, as we close the year, in May, you could be putting an order in for next year's fall, so if you think of it in three seasons, fall, winter, and spring, you know, with this pre-buy, you're, you're getting ahead of the curve, so when we build the 25 budget, you're gonna have money for the, uh, winter, spring, and then the following, uh, fall. So you kind of get the cycle change, and that's, that's what I do with athletics a number of years ago, in order to make sure we have the needs of the fall sports. So, that same concept, we're trying to use that as a way to move forward with all these big purchases of things we need, so we can get that working for, you know, we won't have to be chasing, uh, books and stuff and saying they're not in, cause I mean, in the past, things may not come into October, and, you know, school's open already, so.
Yeah, and that's unacceptable, and one of the things to include teacher voice, um, in this process is, um, Mr. Bobby Bishop, Robert Bishop, will be sending out communication to principals, um, before the end of the week, to make sure that we have, uh, one teacher at, from each school that's selected by the faculty, uh, where we have a monthly meeting and we'll be talking about input on a number of things from, so that we have teacher feedback, voice, and discussion and conversations. Um, and LTU is also, uh, part of that, not included in those, that one person that the faculty's voted on, um, so, uh, Sheila O'Neil will be part of that group, as well as, uh, a high school, middle, and elementary union representative selected by, um, the actual LTU board.
Good, um, I'm sorry. Uh, also, I would like to see Salem State Collaborative come back to Lynn, so they can, some people like to, and, um, I guess that's about it. So, one other thing I want to ask, um, is our executive director of innovation and grants, do we know how much money, how many grants she has sent out for, or how much we're predicting? Because I'm trying to show that even though we're paying for this job, that the grants that are coming in, that she is getting grants, that it basically covering her position plus, so that teachers aren't so afraid, I'm really, they are really concerned, and it really bothers me.
We can certainly, um, do an analysis of that, um, as well as, you know, there's no issue with sharing that publicly, um, but in addition to that, you know, we have some ideas to, through that innovation team, to make some programmatic, um, additions, so adding, you know, pathways to our schools, which would go out and secure additional grant funds to cover positions as well as resources.
Okay, I think that's about it for me, thank you.
I, sorry about that, I didn't mean to slam, I, I wasn't tempted to, I apologize for that. Um, I guess my concern is with, with, just in general, adding another administrator, uh, across the board for anything, and I do understand what you're laying out to us, I understand the importance of all those jobs, but our teachers are understaffed as well, and they're doing more work as well. So, the perception, you know, speaking as a teacher, the perception is, well, you know, we're working harder than we ever have because we have less staff, why are we adding another administrator? So, I just want you to think about that, you know, as we move forward, um, I think that's an important thing to, to think about, um, y- y- you know, I just don't know if this is the right time to add another administrator, I'm just, you're very conflicted, um, and, and like I said, I don't, um, I'm not trying to understate the, the, the job, or, or say that you're, you know, you don't need this, you may, um, I just don't know if the timing's right, so, that's, that's just my thought on it.
Any other questions on this side?
I have to say that I did hear from other committee members that they felt the same way as Eric. They did, so, they may want to table it, oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
This is Capola.
Thank you. Um, okay, one of the things that people talked about, or when they sent mess, some messages to us, were that there were 11 new administrative jobs. Um, I remember it, on a number of those, we closed jobs to change titles and change what you needed people to be doing, um, so.
So direct reports, there were three. There may have been additional administrative jobs, um, Kevin, correct me if I'm wrong on the other ones, but direct reports, to me specifically, were the three new departments. DEI was created before, um, I arrived here, and it was just happened to be implemented once I was superintendent, then, um, we had innovation and grants, that was created out of a need to further explore programming that we currently don't have. Um, we are, we are looking at trying to accelerate maybe 10 years of technology and curriculum in a very fast period of time, which, really, the way the schedule is laid out and the number of needs that we have, uh, makes it very difficult to make that happen. It's just the schedule is not sustainable, in terms of having, you know, five to eight meetings, I know everyone is overworked, it, it has not, you know, I, all of my respect to everyone, um, within our district and in each position and what they, what they cover and function each day. But the reality here is that we have, um, many years of work to catch up on, and my fear is that not accelerating this work, right, is gonna impact the students we have today and the students we have in the future. Um, so the other director, so we had the other direct report being the secondary deputy, which, prior to that, we had Deputy Powers and Deputy Rogiro splitting all of the schools. And so, having a specific deputy to, um, support the middle and high schools has been, has made a tremendous difference in how those principals are operating school sites, um, we're also, you know, focused on not just attendance, but keeping incidents down, um, to a minimum, and making sure that we are supporting the needs of teachers and students ev, you know, every single day. Uh, the other administrators that we had were administrators that we have grown in size and unfortunately needed, right, like, it, within compliance, um, and within a number of other departments that have just grown. We had been operating with the same, my understanding, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, had been operating with the same number of deputies and administrators as we did in, I think you looked back, Kevin, it was 2012 or 2013, um, at which time the district only had about 11,000 or 12,000 students. And so currently, with an 89% minority population, um, that is extremely high needs, not only socio-economically disadvantaged, but English language learners, um, that places exponential pressure on each department and how those departments are run. So, all of those 11 administrators do not directly, um, support the office of, you know, we are part of a structure and an organization, we all support each other, but they don't, they're not my direct reports.
What, besides compliance, what other department that you can think of that expanded, maybe Kevin would know from the budget?
Transportation.
Transportation.
HR.
HR, um, and I think there was some schools that got program specialists.
That's correct.
Administrative jobs, just to name a few.
And we still currently have, like, our four largest elementaries with one program specialist, which is, you know, part of a, a formula that we still need to examine and look at. It's inequitable to have a school of 130, or 170, or 200 students with one program specialist, and then have 550 students or 600 students with one program specialist. So, we still have a lot of work to do in terms of examining how we look at equitable resources within the district.
Remember, Capola, we also had, uh, if you recall, the Assistant Director of Extended Learning, which is geared more around the after-school programming, the after-dark programming, the summer, um, you know, summer programming, so that also was added, and that was, that was a position that pre-Dr. Alvarez, we had started talking about because of all the after-school programming we were doing, we needed someone who could coordinate that, so that there was calibration across, um, the district.
And I believe there was some special education, too, we expanded the special education.
Right, the transition, the two transition people, elementary and secondary.
Our special education team continues to support additional, um, all of our, you know, the numbers have increased tremendously in terms of students that are, are testing and going into special education, starting at the pre-K, um, and starting early at age three and four, uh, and so, we're currently also looking for, how do we expand, you know, there's a need to place, and, you know, we've come up with a plan to alleviate some of the, uh, physical constraints, right, in terms of student seats, but we continue to face challenges in terms of where do we place pre-K students, what we need to support and service them, and, and provide them with instruction. Um, and so, you know, we've added, um, additional special education administrators as well. And, um, Kevin, can you just go over, I know we had the formula, the last one that you had done in terms of the administrator ratio to student ratio?
Yeah, I didn't bring the number tonight with me, but, you know, in the past, we've gone over this, I think we did it through the budget process, that we were still projected under the, uh, state average of administration, uh, on the cost per, uh, student ratio, and, um, I mean, you know, so I, I'd have to rerun those once we get it, this forward after this year, but, uh, we can present that again as part of the budget process to show where we're at, and I mean, you know, I, I used a projection of like, uh, increase, too, and we're still under, so I mean, I, I don't have it tonight, but the exactly dollar that we had, we could rerun it again and show everybody that, we're, we're not over the state average, we're under it, so, and I, I know we were approaching it, but even approaching it, we're just at the state average, so, you know, we're not at the high end where some other school districts are, so, so that just would say, you know, yeah, we're not considered top-heavy on administration based on the size of the school district.
Is that, that is something that's out there, that, you know, people are just keep saying, 11 new jobs, 11 new jobs, not understanding the expansion that you say of the compliance, the transportation, HR, you know, program specialists, you know, extended learning, I mean, you know.
Data center, the data center had one new job.
Oh, the data, the data center, well, we, so, and for an organization that we want to hire teachers, we had one administrator in HR until the beginning of the school year, one, for a system this size. So, the addition, I believe they had two administrators that went to HR.
Correct.
So now there's three. Um, and again, to process the volume of work that they're doing and to try to do recruiting of teachers, um, and hiring of all staff, I mean, three for the size of, of, again, it's, it's, um, it's just not sustainable to, to have an effective system with one HR administrator for our size.
It's four, right? It's actually four, Dr. Alvarez, because the HR generalist, if you recall.
Oh, we added the one.
Was added first, and then we added two additional, um, HR licensed people.
And the organizational chart has a breakdown of where each administrator sits.
I wish we did have that organizational chart in front of us tonight, as well as, um.
It is hard to print, I did share it with, um.
Even if it's in sections to us, you know?
Yeah, I'll, I'll work on that, I'll see if I can print it.
Cause we understand that, you know, the three deputies fall under, and does Kevin fall under you?
Yes, he does.
Okay, so, those four anyways fall under you.
I have eight direct reports.
Eight, okay, I mean, even if it was a page that showed us those eight.
I'll work on having it printed.
Would have been helpful today, um, as well as, it would have been helpful, um, for what you were talking about, Kevin, um, you know, where we fall on administrators.
Yeah, I'll try to, I can try to work that for Thursday night, to have that, where we believe we're at right now.
And I think we, you know, we have to be clearer on, you know, when we change jobs, you know, when they see a new title, they're not seeing that we've taken out of the budget another line, you know, in a different spot. So that, you know, that's, um, just a communication thing, us being clear about that. Um, I know, you know, I, I heard it, but somebody didn't hear it, you know, somebody out in TV land did not hear it, and have a misunderstanding, because every email that I got said, you know, 11 new jobs, new administrative jobs, so they're, you know, that's a piece, but, um, the other thing I'm, I'm thinking, you know, I'm thinking back from a long time ago, I wasn't on the committee, but I, I always thought we did have somebody who was sort of like in charge of these same issues, whether it was Mr. Cole or Mr. Breznerhan many, many years ago, and Deb, you might remember.
Oh, you're going way back.
But I mean, that was a job that fell here, and people did that outreach, you know, and when they left, you know, we had Mr. Urbano, who did a lot of that outreach, and, you know, um, we don't, you know, so, the, it, we're lacking it, obviously, you know, we really are, because, I mean, I can understand when you, when you talk about the incident at Classical, or whether it was the one at Eng, oh, you weren't there for English, but, you know, people, you know, English staff was upset because people didn't go out there, you know, but you were back here notifying people, well, which spot is the right spot to be at? And, you know, it, and that brings up again, um, what we hear all the time, is they always said, we want to see them in the buildings, we never see anybody, we never, nobody ever comes to our buildings. Now they're telling me, why are they coming here? Why are they coming here? You know, uh, they're coming here all the time. Well, which way do you want it? Do you want them to come? Cause you said you wanted them to come, and now they're coming, but you don't want them. Why are they here? Why are they coming so often? I don't know what the right number is, you know, um, they might have a right number that they are only want, but if there's concerns in a building, or, you know, you're gonna have to be there more often.
Sure, I, and, but before your comment, I mean, with, with, uh, 14 schools that have been identified, right, as, um, you know, between 15 and under 10% performing in the state, um, we can't continue to ignore the need that our priority is to be in school buildings, um, and, you know, without this position, we'll continue to be in school buildings and meetings will wait, or not, you know, occur through emails. Um, the communication part will continue to be difficult to streamline across a district this size, um, you know, again, not understating the need for this position, but that's really the reality of what will happen, because it's not, uh, you know, the, in a high-needs district, in our size, uh, this is a position that we need to support the effective operation of the. the effective operation of the entire district.
And I just wanted to touch on, Member Capola, what you were commenting on. You are correct that there were positions in the past that then didn't get filled, say, when they retired. And I think about like the grants position that we added last year because our grants had increased so tremendously, the, you know, the grants we were getting. That position was a position we had. And then because of budget reasons, right, you cut back because budget requires that at times. And so we didn't fill that grants position at that time for many years, actually.
Well, it was also the manager of financial operations when, back in 2009, when he retired, we had budget cuts. And we didn't fill the job until two years ago.
So to your point, you are correct. We've had positions similar to this in other capacities as well as administrators that we had then didn't fill due to budget reasons. And then, you know, we've increased in enrollment. We've increased in tasks that we're required to do by the state. And so, you know, we've asked for positions to be brought back. So your point is valid. The other piece around us being in the buildings or not being in the buildings. And I just want to acknowledge that as a principal, I remember one of the first adjustments I had to make as a principal was being seen not as a teacher. It's a hard adjustment to make. As soon as you get a title, you're seen differently. So when you go into your classrooms as a principal, the teachers seize up. They want to make sure they're doing right, right? Well, now intensify that when the superintendent walks in or a deputy superintendent walks in. So again, it's the hardest thing, at least for me personally. I don't like titles for that reason because they don't see you as an educator anymore. They see you as the boss. And so I think it's about the messaging and the change in mindset about why we're there. We're not there to evaluate them. We're not. We're not writing anything down. We're not putting it into each point. We're there to be a fellow educator, to see what's going on, to hear from them, to watch kids learn, to see what adjustments do we need to make at the district level to help support them. And until that mindset shifts, there is going to be that anxiety of, oh, my God, they're in the building to come and see what we're doing or what we're not doing. And that's not really the purpose. The purpose is how can we better support? And we do want to hear from them. And we do want to see the great work that's happening.
The other thing, let's see. I'm all over the place on this, so. I really like and I appreciate that the union went along with the, you know, the taking off of the long term because so many people told us they took jobs other places. You had students that went with KIP, you know, because, you know, for that exact reason. We couldn't see, you know, what was the problem because we're certainly thinking, you're going to be a long-term sub, but we're not going to let you go. But obviously, somebody who's applying as a candidate could not see that, you know. And especially to have a letter is really important, you know. The other thing is the pay, you know. It's, it's high, you know, I'm hearing it from a lot of people. And.
Well, so this, this position is part of the executive leadership team. And that is the starting salary for an executive director.
I don't know what to say because, you know, we, we worked out to try to get all of those things in line, you know, well before you were here.
Sure.
You know, and get individual contracts, you know, with things out of it and get everything so it was uniform. So it's hard to say that, you know, if that's on that line.
I'd like to move this position to the full committee. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Gaetley?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Okay, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Gaetley?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Pass that down to Eric.
Okay, I'd like to call to order the policy subcommittee meeting for December 12th, 2023.
Member Dugan?
Present.
Member Magnolia?
Present.
Okay, so on tonight's agenda for this meeting, we have just some miscellaneous revisions that we need to take a look at. One of them comes from Section A, in particular, Policy AD, which is our educational philosophy policy. So apparently, this is before, Member Magnolia and I were part of this, but apparently on the 23rd of January in 2020, this was probably done over Zoom, I'm assuming, this was put on hold and hopefully to be replaced by the strategic plan, which, from my information, it was replaced by the strategic plan. So the recommendation would be to rescind this policy, AD.
I'd like to move that we rescind AD and send it to the full committee.
Send it to the full committee, thank you. Second, roll call, please.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Okay, and then the next one is Section B. Couple policies on this one. The school committee conflict of interest, and that's Policy BCB, also held on the same date, the 23rd of January 2020, pending review of the city charter. I'm not sure what happened there. Again, I wasn't a part of that at this time, but apparently MASC's model policy kind of covers all of this. So I don't know, Ms. Presser, if you want to, yeah, if you want to just kind of fill us in a little bit on that one. So we do have Dorothy Presser here to help us out with that one. Thank you again for your time. So nice to see you. It's always nice to see you. You, not a bad one, a lucky one.
So in this, we, in reading my notes, I said review of the city charter, but I believe what I meant in my note was until the attorney in my house has a chance to look at the city charter.
Okay.
But the, there is the law about conflict of interest training on the part of school committee members as well as other public officials, which is covered in the MASC model policy. And if I can just go a little further, the MASC model policy also covers the material that's in your current triple BA. Your current triple BB is really the oath of office, which does not need to be in the policy manual. So if you, excuse me, if you looked at MASCs or adopted MASCs BBBA slash BBBB, you could rescind the BCB and your BBA, BBPA, BBBB and have everything covered.
Okay. So I would like to move that we rescind the LIN policy, BBBA, BBBB, in favor of MASCs, also rescinding Policy BCB from LIN.
Yep.
Yeah, so there's three we have to rescind from LIN and substitute them with the MASC version.
You got all that, Deb?
And move to the full committee. Oh, wait, are we done with B after this?
Uh, there's a little bit more with B, but this is one section, yeah.
So BEDH, I believe that Attorney Gallo thought that maybe that should be put on hold.
Table, okay.
And tabled and, and looked at a little bit more thoroughly.
Okay, so this one would be moved to the full committee, yes. Seconded?
Second, yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Okay, and then BEDH, again, the recommendation of our attorney, Mr. Gallo, would be to table this, just for further review.
Move to table BEDH.
Second, roll call.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
And.
Section D.
That was really it.
That was it, yeah. That was it. Couple other things there, but we can look at those another time.
Yeah, the other, the other items that are sort of hanging are all things where the administrators, I think, need to weigh in more before you take any.
Correct, before you take any action, so.
Before you take any action.
I'd like to move to adjourn.
Second, roll call, please.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Hey, Dorothy, sorry you had to.